The Dayton City Commission will now come to order. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the place of allegiance. And this evening, we have Commissioner Joseph.
Fairchild.
Okay. Thank you so much. You guys do look alike. Okay.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Gracious one, as Christians begin their season of Lent, and our Muslim brothers and sisters are fasting in Ramadan, and our Jewish brothers and sisters are anticipating Passover, we join people of faith who recognize their vulnerability and their need of your mercy. In these days, may all people be drawn closer to you. May you encourage us, renew us, inspire us, and guide us, so that we may align with your will and help create your beloved community. Amen.
Amen.
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Blackshear, may I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Mems.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
Okay, may I have a motion then to approve the minutes from the February 26 meeting?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second motion, Your Honor.
Okay, it's been probably moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the January, not January, February 26 meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay, thank you. Ms. Blackshear, any communications or petitions?
There are none, Your Honor.
None? Okay, well, and so we do have a presentation this evening, so I'd like to invite the city's attorney, Mr. Barbara Dozy, to the podium to introduce the newest independent accountability auditor.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager and Clerk, Barbara Dozy, Director of Law.
Evening.
Here this evening to provide a very brief introduction prior to the report of the IAA to the Dayton Commission. You remember, the IAA was created by ordinance as recommended by the Oversight Reform Group. It was put out for an RFP in late '22 and negotiated after selection was made in '23. Work began end of '23-'24, if my memory serves me correctly. And then Mr. Moore was our first IAA, which you all have met, and the presentations that he's given to commission. In November, Mr. Moore was successful in an election and was elected to the First Circuit Court of Appeals in Hamilton County. And excuse me, my throat is so dry. So I apologize. So what could be seen as a challenge was really an opportunity in my eyes. So with the departure of Mr. Moore, he took the bench in February. So just 30 days ago, we began the process of seeking feedback from the commission and HRC and DPD about potential to improve the work of the IAA. Thank you especially to Commissioner Joseph and Commissioner Fairchild, who provided a substantial amount of feedback. So the team, the new team, has been in place for just a little over a month. And we went with a three-person team from Frost Brown Todd, because we're going to create more capacity, more diversity in perspective, and the ability to really begin to shape, based on the feedback that we received, how we'll be moving forward. To date, in just the 30 days, the IAA has had the opportunity to attend multiple CAB meetings, meet with HRC staff, work with DPD, and get access to all of their systems, is scheduled to meet with DPD, also scheduled to meet with mediation. So we will continue to onboard the new team with my support and support as staff is needed. And that is Ms. Jasmine Jones, who's here with me this evening. She's going to provide her report, and then we'll be able to give you, at the end of her presentation, some changes that are going to occur moving forward. Thank you.
Okay. So good evening to you as well.
Good evening. Thank you for that introduction. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, thank you for your time this evening. This report is pursuant to the agreement and the ordinance establishing this position. This is the first semi-annual report of 2025, and it will cover the data and activities conducted by Mr. Moore in 2024. To begin, I would like to just go over the primary duties of the independent accountability auditor. One is to review Dayton Police Department misconduct complaints. Two, to audit the DPD misconduct complaint and discipline process. Three, to recommend changes and improvements to policy, procedure, and training of the police department. And lastly, to produce reports. So in review of hours of activity by the IAA last year, you can see that Mr. Moore spent most of his time conducting investigations and audits, as well as preparing the semi-annual reports from last year. He also attended several CAB hearings, Community Appeals Board meetings. Before I go over the data, I just want to take some time to define certain terms that I'll be using, so that everyone understands what I'm talking about. So the data we're focusing on today are the citizen-generated complaints. And the two types we'll be looking at is a complaint receipt and a citizen complaint. The complaint receipt is a complaint that could be resolved very quickly, either because the complainant felt that it was resolved to their satisfaction, or based on a cursory investigation, we were able to determine that the complaint was unfounded, or the act was lawful, proper execution of police authority, or it wasn't relevant to the police department. And then you have the citizen complaint. And that is a complaint that requires more than a cursory investigation by the supervisor. So when we look at the data from last year, there were 92 originating events and 185 specific alleged complaints. The reason why I have both these numbers is because there can be several complaints coming from one incident. So it could be one interaction with a citizen that involves more than one police officer, or it could be, or and, it could be multiple complaints against the same police officer. So from one interaction, there could be multiple complaints. And I wanted to show that there were actually only 92 originating events, but the data for the rest of the report will look at the specific alleged complaints. So from 2021 to 2024, you can see there has been a decrease in the number of citizen-generated complaints, specifically a 43.25% decrease. You can also see that there has been a decrease in the number of complaint receipts from 2021. You'll also see there was an increase in the number of citizen complaints from 2021 to 2023, with a decrease in 2024. But when you look closely at the citizen complaints and the complaint receipts every year, in 2021, there was a large number of complaint receipts, and that has decreased over time. That could be attributed to the police department deciding to allocate or categorize these more complaints as citizen complaints, so that there could be a full investigation into those complaints. But my team is going to actually look at every single complaint receipt from last year to make sure that things were categorized properly. And if they were not categorized properly, identify why they were not categorized in the way that they should have been. And before we go into the outcomes of these investigations, I want to go over some definitions as well. So a complaint outcome can be exonerated, and that's when the act described by the complaint did occur, however, the act was lawful. It could be unfounded, and that's when the investigation proved conclusively that the act did not occur. It can be sustained, and that's when the investigation establishes sufficient evidence that the wrongful act did occur. And it could be not sustained, and that's when there isn't enough evidence to determine whether or not the act did take place. So in 2024, out of the 90 citizen complaints, most of them were unfounded. 67% were unfounded, 22% were exonerated, 4% were not sustained, and 7% were sustained. And we're going to focus on those that were sustained. So out of the six complaints that were sustained, they originated from four different events. They were complaints alleged against six different officers, and the allegations were three of them were for violation of policy, two was for lack of service, and one was for discourtesy and disrespect. When we look at those complaints, I looked at the investigation time, and that is the time from when the date of when the complaint was received to the date that the citizen letter was sent. And what a citizen letter is, is it explains to the complainant that an investigation took place, what the outcome was, if they'd like to appeal, what the process to appeal is, and who to contact if they have questions. So the policy says that administrative investigations need to be concluded in 90 days or less, and for all of these investigations that did take place. And then the discipline issued for most of these situations were a training memo, and in one situation was an oral reprimand. And before I conclude this report, I just want to go over an update to this office. So as mentioned, we are now a team of three. And Ms. Bagley and Ms. Burgett, they have significant experience with investigations, so they will be primarily responsible for sitting in and observing. And when we are asked to conduct an investigation, they will take, they will conduct those investigations. Ms. Bagley and I will be doing a lot of the auditing, and I will be responsible for the reporting, analysis, providing recommendations, and involvement with the Community Appeals And so for our plan for 2025 is to expand auditing to include all steps from intake to disposition, to increase time spent auditing, to increase participation in DPD investigations, so sitting in on these investigations, to, as I mentioned, complete a full audit of all 2024 complaint receipts, and to enhance analysis to provide a more robust report to you all in the future. So from what I've seen, there has been great progress, and we hope to build on this progress. And with that, that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. All right, thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Turner Sloss, any questions, comments?
Yes, very briefly. Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Part of the three-person team. I appreciate the presentation this evening. Just a couple of questions. There were some recommendations, and I apologize, it escapes me right now, but I know it was one recommendation, to make sure that the process was, in fact, the complaint process was, in fact, readily available to residents, to citizens. And I just need to get an understanding, I know you may not have the answer now, but perhaps that's something that we can look into, because it's something that we did mention with Mr. Moore. Actually, it was one of the recommendations from Mr. Moore, and then we asked for a follow-up on that recommendation. So if you could just kind of give us an idea of where, I think it was, may have been three recommendations from Mr. Moore, to see where we are in those recommendations and how, in fact, they have been implemented in the process.
Yes. So I attended my first appeal last night, and I was able to observe some of those same things that he observed. And I've already started to think through and talk to people to get an understanding of how we can make this process easier for citizens. There may be difficulty with outlining a complaint, so that the appeals board can actually respond to the complaint properly. So I was thinking maybe creating a template, but that's something that I do need to spend time looking at and talking to people about, to make sure that it works for everyone.
Okay. Thank you. If you could just follow up with us on that, that would be greatly appreciated.
I will do that.
Thank you very much for the report.
Okay, good. Commissioner Fairchild.
Yeah, no, welcome aboard, and thank you for this report. It already feels like it has more substance than what we've had previously. I think there's work for us to do on one of Mr. Moore's recommendation, which was really around the access. And I know Commissioner Joseph's committee had worked.
That's.
Right, it's supposed to be at the mediation center. And I was thinking about on our side, how is that working? Because you had several recommendations on publicizing the number and getting the word out. And I'm kind of curious with the drop in complaints, whether we've moved away from what we had implemented already, or if it's still in place.
If it's working.
If it's working, right.
Mm-hmm.
So I think there's work for us to do on that. Again, thank you for your report. I look forward to what you've outlined in 2025. I think it goes to the heart of what we were looking for when we put this ordinance and this, the independent auditor into place. So thank you, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shaw?
Likewise. Thanks for the update, and absolutely welcome aboard.
Thank you.
They're all looking at me, because this is my committee. I'm really pleased to have you here. On behalf of my committee, my co-chair, I'm thrilled to see, especially the points that are shown on the screen right now. These are getting right at the goals that our Oversight Working Group put together. Commissioner, I share your optimism. I love to see the declining numbers. I know that the mediation center and others have worked hard to make access to the complaint process easy and understandable. And the timeline coincides, their work coincides with that decrease. So let's hope it's sustainable. We'll make sure with mediation center, like both my commissioner colleagues have mentioned, that the processes are still working, that they're able to do effective outreach. So I'm really glad to see that nice slope. I do want to say, there was a pie chart, one of the first slides, and it showed that the amount of time that the previous IAA had spent. There you go. I think if we could shrink down the two biggest to 10%, and fill that time with auditing, investigations, familiarization with the process, contact with complainants, appellants, that would be, that would be sort of the original goal of what we hoped. But I think my colleagues, Special Commissioner Fairchild, we spent a long time talking about this. Staff, you've done great work on this, I appreciate that. And we're glad to welcome you to this.
Thank you. I'll incorporate that feedback.
Okay, thank you. My colleagues have said enough. All right, so thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right. So Ms. Blackshear, we have any additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay. Ms. Dixie, any deletions, additions, or comments to the calendar?
Your Honor, I, this evening, I do have one item to add to the calendar this evening. It is going to be item 3A. It is a professional service agreement with Graybar Electric Company. This is a engineering lighting company to help us with some of the design construction of the lighting upgrades that are going to happen along Main Street, to join some of the other private property owners. We own a number of, we own key assets or amenities on Main Street, the entry at Main and Monument, where we have the private fair monument, and the obelisks. We have 34 North Main, and we, of course, have the flyover sculpture. And so this is all, this is being added, because we are trying to make sure this is done prior to NATO being here at the, towards the end of May. So, and it is a contract, professional services contract for $990,421, coming out of the project funds that you previously approved for NATO. This is not in addition to.
Right.
I have a couple of items I'd like to highlight for you. Item number two is a service agreement with Broombrow Construction. This is our third amendment for the police station facility that is going to be built in West Dayton. It's a construction manager-at-risk contract, so this is our final GMP for the building completion. And the total is not to exceed $8.3 million. So we're excited about being able to bring this investment into West Dayton. And I know the police department is probably really excited about having some new operational digs to work out. Item number four is a, an award of contract with LJ DeWes for $373,306. This is for Wayne Avenue traffic calming, and I know this is an area of interest for you all. This is the part of Wayne that is from, I wrote it here somewhere, from Fifth to US-35.
Mm-hmm.
So it's the part that's closest to the district right now. There'll be more work coming beyond US-35, which is where there's a lot of neighborhood concern with regards to traffic calming as well. So we are excited about that. And it is primarily going to be doing, bringing in some increased decorative lighting, adding curb extensions, so they're higher, so that they are greater buffers in case somebody goes awry from their lane. And this is our second lowest bidder, because the first lowest was deemed non-responsive, just so you know that. Mainly deemed non-responsive, because they were not pre-qualified for the work by ODOT, which is a requirement. And then my last item I would like to highlight is item number three, which is a service agreement with IGS Energy. As you know, we have been very innovative with our water department to continue to look for ways to drive down costs for operations. And so those costs benefit our rate payers, right? We have, you know, the lime kiln, we're one of two municipalities in the country that run a lime kiln, and that brings a great deal of revenue to offset overhead costs. We also, just recently, you approved the renewable natural gas. Again, very early and innovative with that, so excited to bring that. Well, this is another example where we're turning a brownfield property into a revenue generator for the water department, to help, again, keep rates down for our rate payers. So I'd like to call Meg Maloney forward. She has a brief presentation to share with you this evening.
Good evening, Commissioners, City Manager, and Clerk. I'm excited to share with you this project that I have been working on since I started in the Sustainability Office. And it actually has been multiple decades, I think, in the making, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a second. But this is the City of Dayton's first solar array that will be powering our Miami Water Treatment Facility. So I actually want to go back a little bit in time to the Sharon Williams fire of 1987. This was the worst fire, one of the worst fires in the City of Dayton's history, and it took place at the Sharon Williams factory that's located on Dayton Park Drive, adjacent to our Miami Water Treatment Facility and well field. And the stories that I have heard is that they went to put out the fire, but they couldn't, because if they put water on it, it would have contaminated our well field. So out of this challenge, and all this rubble that you see in this picture, one of the big innovations that came of that is our source water protection program. So the City of Dayton took the challenge of the Sharon Williams fire and created a nationally-recognized program that has influenced other cities to protect their groundwater. If you go on the EPA's website, we're still used as the example of like, a highlight of the ways that cities are protecting their well field. But what we were left over was this vacant field, and it has been sitting there since 1987. And so this project first came across the Sustainability Office, I think driven from a lot of your all's conversation about what can we do to not only save water, or save money for our water department, but also revitalize these sites? And so what we decided is we would start looking into how we could revitalize it with solar. So we went through a rigorous four-year process. We first started looking at this in 2020. We hired a third-party consultant, because our priority was, we wanted to drive down carbon emissions, but we wanted it to save money. So how can we do this? What is the size of the array? After we got the sizing, we then worked to do an RFP. We put the RFP out. We got six bidders back. We had a very rigorous selection process. So we interviewed them, we had a third-party consultant check all of their numbers. They kind of helped us weed out a couple people through that. And then we interviewed all the bidders, and we selected IGS and Kukosing. And then we have spent the past year negotiating with them to ensure that we could mitigate risks to the city, and that we would see these savings, and that's where we're at today. So a quick piece on the solar feasibility study. So with large energy users like the water department, we wanted to ensure that we would save money on our bills, but we didn't know the correct size solar array. Because if we just put out as much solar as we wanted, that doesn't mean it's going to save us money on our bills. So we had to get the sizing correct. So we worked with Go Sustainable Energy. They identified that a four-to-six megawatt array, which is around 20-to-30 acre array, would help us save the maximum amount of money. They said we could see anywhere from $35,000 to $230,000 a year in savings, and that this would offset anywhere from 30% to 40% of our energy load. What we ended up deciding on is when we selected IGS, with the tax credits that are available, we found that five megawatts would save us the most amount of money. And we're estimated to save around $4 million over the lifetime of the project. We estimate that we'll break even within three to five years, and that will offset 38% of the facility's emission. This also helps with resiliency, as we learned through the tornadoes, that if something goes through, a natural disaster, it can expose critical infrastructure. So this project is also ensuring that we can keep pumping at our water station, ensuring that the region continues to get the source. The amount of emissions, I thought, this was always a fun fact, it is equivalent to powering 781 homes in a year. So that's how much solar we will be producing on the site. So this is our first solar project. I should actually say, because I looked at the calendar, this is actually our second. We have two on the calendar tonight, because we are putting solar at West Pot as well. So the police department will also have solar on their building as well. So maybe it's just a solar night, I guess. But we are also looking at, we just finished our feasibility study for the airport as well. So we're asked the same question, how do we maximize cost savings at the airport, but then still continue to cut down on emissions there? So we'll probably have something more in the future. Yeah, with that, I'll take any questions or comments.
Great, great, great work, great work. Commissioners, Commissioner Turner Sloss, any questions, comments?
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't have any for Ms. Maloney. I just wanted to congratulate you, as well as the entire team. I know this is something, when I first came on board, this is something that you were eagerly awaiting to come into fruition, so here we are. So congratulations. I'm very excited to approve it this evening.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Fairchild.
This is great, and, you know, it's the right thing to do for the environment, it's also the right thing to do for being fiscally responsible, and to demonstrate for others what can be done. I was just curious how, with the lifespan of the solar panels?
Yeah, good question. It's a 30-year is like the contract, but we've seen panels can last anywhere from 35 to 40 years as well.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Shaw?
That's great. No, I just, I too want to just thank you for these different kind of revenue generating opportunities. If not that, then at least expense minimizing opportunities. This is great work. I'll get with you later on. I want to understand the concept of how a smaller footprint adds to the.
Yes, like how if, yes, because we had a couple bidders that were like, we can put solar all over the Kitty Hawk Golf Course. But that doesn't necessarily mean it's actually going to save you money. So we'd be happy. Matthew is here, he's our sustainability specialist at the city. He's like an expert at talking to people about this, so we can have him chat with you.
Very good, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Joseph?
I'm thrilled. This is what we've been looking forward, we've been looking forward to this for a long time, working toward it. I want to thank my colleagues for their continual support. Staff, you did a really excellent job. I've been waiting for this for a long time. We knew the possibility was there, and here it is. And I just want to underline something that you've said, and that is, we're not just doing it to, because it's the right thing to do, we're doing it because it's the right thing to do, and it saves citizens, or us, money. And that is an amazing balance to find. So congratulations on finding it. Thank you to the partners, thank you to the staff, thank you to my colleagues for their support. This is very exciting.
Okay, exciting. We just keep moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate. So Ms. Blackshear, do we have any citizens who are signed up to speak on City Manager's recommendations?
There are none, Your Honor.
None? Okay, Commissioners, additional comments on City Manager's recommendations?
I don't have any.
Commissioner Turner Sloss?
I don't have any, Your Honor.
Have any?
Thank you. I just would like to thank Ms. Dix's team very briefly for providing the additional context as it relates to item number four, and again, to all of the concerns as it relates to Wayne Avenue, as well as her comments for the additional calendar item that was added. That's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Fairchild?
Yeah, I just had a couple questions about the added item.
Okay.
That's all, the bulk of the cost is on the private fair island. Is there more being done than the lighting? Because, I mean, that was a substantial cost for the private fair portion of that amount.
There, between the assets that we own, which is private fair, private fair is also, because we're doing some inviting lighting that, you know, with regards to the plaza, because it has a plaza there, and there's obelisks on Main and Monument that are also getting new lights, so that is a true, truly gateway experience, as you're coming first onto Monument, or onto Main for Monument. But the flyover is also a chunk of that, because of the upgrade to the lighting, because it's adding, we're looking at adding articulating lighting, so that it actually looks like, you know, the motion of the air flight, and then 34, 30, the 34 North Main building that we own.
Right. Yeah, I think the private fair is like $700,000, and the other. Yeah, I think the private fair is like $700,000, and the other two are.
Right, because it's way up in the air, and there's lots of elements with private fair.
Okay. I don't expect you to have this tonight, but could we get a, like an accounting of what the total budget is for this, for everything that we're doing in the upgrades around downtown and the anticipation of NATO?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
You're good?
Yep.
Okay, Commissioner Shaw.
No, that was going to be my question. I did want to kind of understand the state investment and our opportunity to host the NATO parliamentary session. So, yeah, just at some point, I would kind of like to understand better that process, and where the money's coming from.
Okay, Commissioner Joseph.
Nothing further, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we're good. We have a motion then to approve the City Manager's recommendations?
I approve, I move to approve the City Manager's recommendations.
Second the motion, Your Honor.
It's been probably moved and seconded to approve the City Manager's recommendations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, legislation, Ms. Blackshear.
First reading ordinance number 32141-25, to vacate Hickory Street from the western tenuous to Alberta Street. First reading resolution number 6851-25, authorizing the acceptance of an aggregate grant award from the United States Department of Justice in the amount of $165,675 and zero cents on behalf of the City of Dayton. That is it, Your Honor.
Okay. All right. So do you have any citizens who are registered to speak?
There are none, Your Honor.
None? Okay, Ms. Dixie, do you have any closing comments?
I have none, Your Honor.
I'm done? Okay, Ms. Blackshear, any closing comments?
I have none, Your Honor.
None? I asked you that once before, I already did that. Okay, Commissioners, closing comments. Commissioner Charles Lawson.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I would like to, brought to you by Ms. Reed, thank you, Ms. Reed. Empowering renters, educating buyers, know your housing right. Join the City of Dayton's Human Relations Council on Thursday, tomorrow, March 6, 30 p.m., at Grace United Methodist Church, where important discussion will take place on housing challenges, including, excuse me, disability access and ADA accommodations in partnership with the regional housing experts. This event will provide valuable insight for renters, buyers, and landlords. So please, we encourage everyone to make sure they go out tomorrow evening, the 6th of March, 5:30 p.m. at Grace. And then also Miami Valley Urban League Pillars Award nominations are open until March 10. Pillars Awards honors individuals who have shown exceptional leadership, service, and dedication uplifting the Miami Valley community. So again, thank you, Ms. Reed, for providing this information, and we encourage everyone to please make your nominations by March 10. And then I also would like to, the mayor and I both had the opportunity to read to a number of second graders today at Roosevelt Elementary. They were, in fact, just awesome. They were studious, they answered a number of questions, they were highly engaged, and I really enjoyed my opportunity to read with the students at Roosevelt. And I just would like to acknowledge the work of Ms. Johnson, Ms. Lewis, Ms. Taylor, and Dr. Toth for their open invitation.
That's good, and you left too quick. I have your certificate.
Yes, thank you.
This patient, so.
For grabbing that for me, I appreciate it.
Put it in your office, so you can get that when you.
All right.
Move in that space.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Fairchild.
Yes, as I shared in my prayer, we're in a season of Lent that begins today with Ash Wednesday for Christians, and Ramadan began over the weekend. And so for those people who are fasting in this season, we pray that you would have a meaningful time in this season of fasting and reflection, and that you may have a meaningful Lent or Ramadan, whichever you are observing. And I also got the chance to read this week, I think, so did Commissioner Shaw.
No, I have something to come up with, rescheduling that.
All right. I got to be at Kemp Elementary, and the principal, Amy Ernst, welcomed me there, and Ms. Collins let me read to her class. I think there were actually three classes of kindergartners, 60 kindergartners, and they were absolutely wonderful and engaging, and wide-eyed, and excited to be celebrating Dr. Seuss's birthday, and gain the experience reading. So thank you to the staff over at Kemp, and particularly those kindergartners that made the morning such a great experience.
Yep, good, thank you. Commissioner Shaw.
Sure, so keeping with the theme of our young people, it's the Kids Entrepreneurship Expo hosted by our Department of Rec and Youth Services. It's on Saturday, March 15, from 10 a.m. to 12 p.m. at the Northwest Rec Center. So I'd like to, join me to shop from our next generation of business owners. I'm really excited about this, as you know, we have a soft spot for entrepreneurs and that are, take the risk to go in business, even if they're young people, so I'm really excited about that. Also, excited to announce, and really, I'm taking your thunder, because I know you shared this on your social media, but Dayton is number one among Tier Two metros for development on site selections. I'm assuming this is Site Selector Magazine's national radar. Very exciting about that. This ranking highlights our city's growth, our strong business climate, and, most importantly, our strong sense of community collaboration, which is a driving force for us around here. So really excited to share that, and thank you, Mayor.
No, thank all you guys.
Yeah, and thanks to City Manager and your staff for this. I mean, it would not happen without you, and this is just a strong, again, collaboration with the business community, and so many other sectors of our community that makes us very attractive for folks to do business with us. So I hope we keep that.
No, thank you much. Commissioner Joseph.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things today. First, this Saturday, Welcome Dayton to the City, along with the partners, are planning an International Women's Day celebration. It's going to be at the Dayton Metro Library Downtown. They're going to have music, dance, art, cultural displays, and inspiring stories. It runs from 11:00 to 2:00 this Saturday, like I said, at the library downtown. Please join us. It's always interesting, they always have interesting food, and the dancing is amazing. So I hope to see you there. Second, Walnut Hills Neighborhood is having a cleanup this next Saturday, the 15th. Meet at Highland Park at 9:00. They're going to clean up from 9:00 to 11:00. I just want to mention that Carroll High School student athletes are joining them to help, and I'm proud of them for doing that, too. So supplies will be provided, along with donuts. So there's incentive to be there, you don't have to bring anything. Maybe wear some old clothes, because you're cleaning up Walnut Hills Neighborhood. But I appreciate if you're able to do it, hope to see you there.
Okay, one thing that Commissioner Fairchild forgot, what's this here?
Oh, apparently a miscommunication had occurred, inviting people to tomorrow night's meeting, but it indicated March 5. And so there are some people who showed up tonight for that meeting, and we want to make sure citizens know that the meeting is actually tomorrow night at 5:30 at the Northwest.
Northwest.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
What meeting? What meeting, could you?
What's that?
What meeting?
Oh, it is the stakeholders' meter for the interrupting violence program.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, just a couple things I want to make sure we mention, that we also have a City of Dayton co-ed soccer program. The registration ends March the 15th, and I want to make sure you can get involved in that, and that's ages three and at ages 15. So you can register online at any of our recreation centers as well. All right? And then also check out thenohowell.gov for new job postings, because we consistently have those jobs where we need more and more of our young people, as well as those who are in their prime to work at the City of Dayton as well. All right? And then just lastly, I do want to add, unfortunately, a moment of silence for Ms. Virginia Platt-Garris. And she is the mother of Marty Garrus, and the wife of Judge Garrus. And we want to have a moment of final silence just for them, if you will. Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you.
She has passed, I think it was Monday, or Sunday?
Sunday.
Sunday, okay. Yeah, thank you for that. Want to also mention that we had another meeting of our Peace Committee just yesterday. And we also have the, some of the experts from the Cure Violence Global Organization that are in the city today, again, assessing information on how we can continue to formulate and put the information together before we begin working with the community-based organizations to move that process forward to create the most peaceful city in the world. And so today, they did a tour with the police department, and I thank you, we have some of Dayton's finest right here in the building right now. But thank you, gentlemen, for the work that you did with them, and making the hospitable elements of Dayton available to our guests. And then, lastly, okay, love and peace for all, and violence and hatred for none. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.